Alrighty then. We'll get started. Welcome everyone to Santa Quentin City Planning Commission Meeting. It's Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Alright, would anyone like to get us started tonight with an invocation or a thought? Okay, would anyone like to lead us in the pledge tonight?
I can, I can give an invitation.
Sure.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this evening that we have to, to meet here as a planning commission and grateful for all the blessings we enjoy for this great community that we have to, to live and work in. We are grateful for moisture that has fallen and we ask that we can have more that can bless this, this community. We ask that we can be able to attend to the things on the agenda tonight and that we can be guided to, to make the right decisions and, and make progress in the things we're working on. We're grateful for all that we have and the blessing that we have to, to live in this country and we pray for this in the name of Jesus Christ, Amen.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone like to lead us in the pledge tonight?
I'll lead the pledge tonight.
Thank you.
You may go quickly stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Tonight, excuse me, on the agenda, um, we're gonna start with the public forum. So for those of you in attendance, that's your opportunity to address the commission on anything that's on your mind. We don't have a public hearing on any of the other agenda items tonight, so the public forum will be your chance to address the commission if you'd like to. After that, we've got two items on the agenda. We're gonna talk about the Ossler subdivision and we're going to look at some proposed revisions to the Santa Quentin City zoning code land use table specifically with regard to the Main Street business districts. And then after that, we will attend to other business, which includes approving the minutes from our last two meetings and we'll get out of here. So let's get the, uh, public forum started. I'll open the public forum at seven oh three. No one signed up specifically? Would anyone like to address the commission? Please step up to the podium for us and state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Jenny Wilcox. Um, I am a real estate agent and I represent, um, my buyer, uh, Juan, sorry, Juan Finley. And she has expressed interest in purchasing a property located at fifty-five South, three hundred East that is currently zoned Main Street Residential. And her desire is to remodel the existing building. It's on a half acre lot. And make that into a new nail salon. Um, she has the desire to, you know, obviously if she's purchasing the property, she wants to put roots here and make this her community. So obviously it looks like on your agenda, that's something that's going to be discussed later today. And I just wanted to let you know that was our interest. Um, I do know that the property next door to that lot is, uh, forty-five South, three hundred East. That property just went under contract with Holiday Oil. And so that one is Main Street Commercial, right Jason? Okay. So hopefully that will persuade the train of thought that this is a, an easy transition to a business like she would like to put in.
Okay.
Okay, any other question, any questions that I can answer about what her plans are?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay.
We'll keep that in mind as we go through that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to address the commission tonight during the public forum? Okay, in that case, we will close the public forum at seven oh five. And we'll move on to agenda item number one, the Ossler subdivision preliminary review.
Alright, just a brief, brief introduction. This is a proposed five lot subdivision, uh, located in the R eight zone on one point three eight acres. I guess specifically the, the sites located at four twenty-one South, one hundred West. And it's proposed that there be five lots, uh, that are, that are each have a minimum, uh, square footage of eight thousand square feet. There is one lot that is, is proposing and requesting that the city consider, um, implementing the infill reduction for, for one of their lots, which basically allows for the lot to, to, um, have, have lesser, um, uh, frontage or, or square footage. They're not looking to address the, the square footage at all, but they, they do ask to have a reduced, uh, frontage. They could go as, as, um, as much as, as sixty-four feet of frontage, but this lot they propose to have just under sixty-nine, uh, linear feet for the frontage of that lot. They, they could have qualified to have, uh, more lots, uh, have this infill reduction applied to it, but they're only, uh, wanting it to be for, for the lot number two. This is a preliminary plan, so, so tonight, uh, they would look for a recommendation from the, the planning commission to the city council. There's a proximity map. Uh, the cemetery is just to the, the northeast, or I should say this site is just southwest of, of the cemetery. And here is a layout of the proposed subdivision. Let's see, let me go to the next one. So there's an existing home on the corner. Uh, the lot I spoke of that's requesting the infill reduction is, is to the east of that lot, which would have the, uh, the reduced frontage. And then they'd have three lots, uh, south of that. So, uh, this did receive a recommendation from the, the development review committee. Uh, with the condition that all engineering and red lines be addressed. And, uh, really tonight, because they have the, uh, this is a preliminary review, but because they're asking for that infill reduction, the planning commission does have purview over that. And so, uh, we would, we would propose and, and, uh, and, and it would need to happen in two separate motions. One to, to, uh, grant the, the infill reduction if the planning commission chooses to do that. And then the, the second motion would be a recommendation to the city council. So we do have the, the applicant here, uh, if you have questions for him, but other than that, um, that's all, all I really, I guess, need to say for, for an introduction of this proposed, uh, five lot subdivision.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, since the applicant is here, I would invite you, if you would like, to add anything to that presentation, if you have anything you'd like to say?
Nah, I think Jason did a great job.
Okay, alright, sounds good. We will, uh, move into discussion and if we have any questions, maybe we'll call you up for that. Thank you. Okay, commissioners, what are your thoughts on this one? Which lot? Can you show us which one is the infill lot? And, and just to restate, um, what I think you said, they are just looking to reduce the frontage, but not the lot area.
Right, yep. According to our infill reduction standards, they could, uh, reduce those requirements up to like twenty percent. And, uh, and like I say, they could do that for three lots, but in this case, they're only asking for the one lot and it's only for, for the frontage. So it still meets the, it's still gonna be eight thousand square feet, but it's this lot that is just east of the existing home. Uh, that I think there's some flat work on there that they're proposing to, uh, demolish and remove off of that site. There is an existing shed and they indicate on the plans that they want to, to keep that shed and, and I, we don't see any issues with that shed remaining there.
Okay. Is the overhead power gonna be a problem on that lot? That's...
So that's something we've worked through and it, usually we try and, and get that, that overhead power underground. Uh, and so depending on where those power lines are, sometimes it, it works, sometimes it doesn't. I believe in this, we're able to get the, the overhead power, but it just depends on the, the location of the existing, uh, power poles.
To be determined.
So I, I think, I, if I remember right, this one does have the power going, uh, underneath. Uh, at least within their subdivision, but there would, there would be parts where it comes back up and, and, and utilizes existing poles that are in that, on that street. And in to the, the east in that neighborhood, to the east of them.
Looks like there's a pole about one halfway through that lot, right? Where that dotted line is?
I think it was included on one of the other drawings.
CenturyLink has them everywhere.
Would you state your name for us for the record, please?
Yeah, my name's Ray Sossler. And, and that hash line is a, a CenturyLink cable. And, um, the plan for that is to, it hasn't been done yet, but essentially to trench it and go into, into the P U E to the south. And then all the way along and then up and then, um, across the street. And then bore through it and then, um, bring the cable up to the current post.
So currently it's above ground, they're gonna put it below ground. It's not gonna be a problem. Okay.
I should have shown this map that has better notes on, on some of those things. So there is that hash line, but you can see the note there that it's proposed to be relocated in, in underground.
Cool.
And you said that one that they're proposing the smaller frontage, it's still eight thousand feet, it's just smaller on the front.
Yeah, I believe it's, um, it's eight thousand and change. And the reduction is, so I think size wise, it's similar to the homes just to the east of it.
Yeah.
But it's just a little bit of slightly irregular shaped, but it definitely has more than eight thousand square feet.
What size are the other lots?
Uh, let's see. They're, they're a little bit bigger. Let's, let me get the plat that's gonna have the, isn't it stated in the first?
The lots to the south?
Yeah.
Those are, um, point three.
Okay.
Yeah, thirteen thousand square feet.
Basically my corner of the neighborhood and exactly what it looks like.
Is there lot numbers for these or, oh, there is lot number two is the one you're asking for infill reduction?
Yep. Like I said, they could go as, as narrow, based on the twenty percent calculation, they could go as narrow as sixty-four feet, but they're proposing to go like sixty-eight, uh, almost sixty-nine feet. So it is, is, it's not the narrowest it could be per the infill reduction, but nonetheless, uh, it still requires the planning commission to approve that infill reduction. I think we talked about this at the concept plan and, and I think the planning commission, for the most part, didn't have an issue with it, but, but there's no action taken at, at concept plan. So this, this stage would be, uh, the more appropriate time to take formal action on that.
Yeah, we've, we've seen this once before. I didn't have a problem with it then.
Yeah. Are you planning to build on any of these lots? Are you just gonna sell the lots? Is that the?
Uh, the, the plan is I, I will not be the builder.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna pass that along.
Fair enough. The only reason I was asking is because there is a requirement with the infill, which you are probably aware of, um, that there's additional architectural requirements for the building that is built on an infill lot. And so I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Okay, yeah, I think I had seen something, but I appreciate that reminder.
Yeah, and there's, that doesn't apply to any other lots in the subdivision, right? Just to be clear. I think it's only the little lot that takes advantage of the infill reduction.
I don't believe so. And that's, that's a good reminder as well for me.
Okay, um, just because I'm curious, I noticed on one of the drawings, um, it looks like there's a retention basin within the park strip. And I just hadn't seen that before, so I was...
Well, so what, what happens is, is, uh, they're required to retain, uh, all of the, the stormwater on site. And so sometimes for sake of, of space, they, they provide what they call infiltration gallery, uh, infiltration galleries, or you might hear them referred to as R tanks. And they'll usually put those in, in like the park strip and that. So basically there are these, these like hollow, you know, milk cartons, if you will, that, that help, uh, collect that stormwater and allow it to percolate in the ground. So it's, it's an approved, uh, type of stormwater, um, management tool. So that's, that's how they would, would accompany that or accomplish that. Um, but to your earlier point, that, that is probably something you would be a good thing to, to add as a condition of approval is, is reminding them about the, any requirements that, that accompany that infill reduction.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. So that basin, when I looked at the drawing, it looked like it was just a surface basin, but you're saying it's just all underground storage?
It'll just look like a typical park strip for you and, and, but underneath it'll be, uh, hollow and, and, uh, have that, that space to, to hold water.
That's kinda cool.
Yeah, I also noticed, um, there's a bulb out there, which I was, I was kinda surprised to see. Do we have those anywhere else?
Well, so the reason why we have that bulb out is, is because, um, across the street is the Orchard Park Development that is, is townhomes. And generally the, the council has not traditionally, uh, granted a deferral agreement for anything but single family homes. And so they put in the infrastructure across the road and really, uh, again, because, because it's, this is the core area town and, and, uh, you know, engineering is, is not as definitive on exactly where everything needs to go. That's how it worked out with Orchard Park. And, and so really what we're trying to do is mirror what happened on that corner. And so there'll be that bulb out and then we've, we've tried to, to, to bring the, the curb and gutter, um, on, on one hundred west from the south of that corner down so that there's, there's appropriate area for people to do on-street parking. So that's, that's why that's there is, it's really a mirror image of, of, uh, the corner to the north, which, which did not get a deferral agreement.
Gotcha. It's kind of a nice feature. I kinda like it, but it was, yeah, something that we don't see very often, so.
Yeah, and we're happy to match it, so.
Yeah, okay, great. Alright, any questions or concerns, commissioners? So we have a recommendation from staff to include as a condition, um, that they meet all requirements of the infill reduction standard, right? Is that how you would word that, Jason?
Yeah, and I, I got a couple of suggested motions, uh, motions up there if that helps, but I think you bring up a good point with, with, uh, anything that is, is tied to that infill reduction, um, as, as maybe being noted in the, the, uh, motion.
Okay, and so we're looking for a motion on the infill reduction first and then we'll look for a motion on the subdivision separately. If anyone is prepared to make that motion.
Commissioner Wood will make a motion to approve the infill reduction request for lot two of the Ossler subdivision, reducing the lot frontage from eighty to sixty-eight point seven five feet. As long as, with the condition that they meet all infill reduction codes.
Great, thank you. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second? Let's vote. Commissioner Wood, aye. Commissioner McNiff?
Aye.
Commissioner Howard?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Aye.
Okay, the infill reduction is approved unanimously. Now I would look for a motion on the subdivision itself.
I'll make a motion that the recommended, sorry, that I make a motion to recommend the approval of the Ossler subdivision with the following conditions. All planning and engineering red lines would be addressed in reference to the infill reduction motion that we just had.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Have a second? Alright, let's vote. Commissioner Hoffman?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Howard?
Aye, sorry.
Commissioner McNiff?
Aye.
Commissioner Wood?
Aye.
So, uh, we're forwarding a positive recommendation on that subdivision.
And just helpful for the minutes, I know Emily's brought this up before. Who, who made the, the, them a second on that?
Rochambeau, go.
So, I was gonna say, it might be helpful when you, when you hear the second to repeat who made the second, so she knows exactly who, who you, uh, uh, are, are determining made that, that second.
Very good, that's a good suggestion.
It was half him, half me came with you that.
Okay, so, uh, we've forwarded, we're forwarding a positive recommendation on that subdivision to the city council and the infill reduction was granted. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yep. And with that, we can move on to agenda item number two, Santa Quentin City zoning code land use table review.
Alright, so we, we talked about this a little bit last week and, and, uh, really I think our approach tonight with this is, last time we, we put up a, an Excel spreadsheet of, of a number of issues which we found. You know, I talked about sending you that Excel spreadsheet so you could reference it. I felt like that, that probably wasn't gonna be very helpful. That was just putting a lot of problems before you. So instead, we basically put it in the form of a draft ordinance with actual proposals, uh, and, and these are just proposals. This is a working document. If, if, if you wanna see things different, this is the time to, to bring it up and give us direction, but, but instead of just giving you, showing you where the problems are at, this, this, uh, provides, uh, potential solutions to, uh, the issues and the, um, uh, discrepancies and, and the things that we, we see in the, the land use table and the definitions associated with the Main Street Business District Zone, which affects the areas within that zone, which are, uh, Central Business District, Main Street Commercial and Main Street Residential. So during the public forum, you know, we'd, we'd heard an example of, of a, a land use that, uh, at least to me personally seemed surprising. Uh, wasn't allowed in our Main Street Residential Zone. Uh, Main Street Residential does allow for commercial. Um, so, uh, having a, a nail salon in the core area town, I was surprised that our language wasn't really clearly accommodating of something like that, but, but, uh, uh, some of the, the language that you see in there will, will help address things like that and maybe mature our, our code to where it's, it's, it's can, uh, takes into consideration those types of uses. Now, that's, that's just my opinion. If the planning commission or the city council feels differently, then, you know, that's why we go through this process, but, uh, as you'll see, it, there, there's still work that needs to be done on this. And really, I guess, for, for tonight's purposes, and hopefully you've been, had a chance to look through and review some of the, the notes that we've taken or some of the proposed, uh, amendments that we've, we've put before you. But if you have, uh, any comments or if any further direction, we'll continue to, uh, as staff to, to work on this and make progress. I think it might be appropriate for us to, to notice a public hearing for the next meeting. Uh, we would need to do that by the end of this week, uh, Friday. That doesn't necessarily mean that next time we'll have a perfectly clean, polished draft for you for a recommendation. Hopefully we will. But I think we, we're kinda just taking this as, as we go and, and, you know, we, we've got, uh, uh, you know, Ryan Harris has done a really great job of, of working on this and, and helping to, to make some, uh, some progress. So e- even with what's before you, I, I'm seeing some things that we probably need to address and, and look at a little bit closer. You know, even like last minute before we, we put this in the packet, there were some things that we looked at. So it's, it's certainly not perfect, but again, this is a work in progress and, and we would love to get your feedback on this. That's, I think, probably the best approach with this is we'll continue to, to work on it and make changes. And, and if you have any, uh, issues with these changes, then, then we'd love to hear your input on that. Or maybe there's things that you noticed that, that maybe we missed, that we would love to, to get your, uh, input on that to, to address it as well. So I don't know if it's necessary to go through at this time, every little change that we've made. That might be maybe a little overkill for, for purposes of, of tonight, unless you want me to. I'll, I'll take your direction on however you want to, to work on this, but as you can see in, in this draft language, um, it starts with, with some, uh, definitions that are addressed, um, and, and some language that's repealed and and, and I guess I shouldn't make assumptions. We have some newer planning commissioners. When, when we provide these, these draft ordinances to you, uh, the red with the strike through is, is language that we're proposing to remove. And then the, the blue underlying language is, is language that we're proposing to add. I know Ryan Harris, we, we, uh, we discovered, um, this, this tool that was kind of like a, um, a PDF of definitions that, um, were, were good for planners, uh, to look at and use for these types of, of, you know, code, um, considerations to, to get good definitions for different types of land uses. So that's a reference that we've, we've kinda used to help us look at some of these definitions, like we've done in, in recent months. You know, sometimes a definition is, is a concoction of a bunch of different definitions and we, we kind of take, ta-take what we think, uh, is most descriptive and, and works, uh, best for our community. So, uh, there's, there's work that's been done on some definitions. And then, and then down further, um, there's the land use table for those three separate areas that are in the Main Street Business District Zone. And you'll see that there's some, uh, uh, some things added. I mean, I've already given some, some direction and, and something that we'll probably work on is instead of having major and minor automotive service and repair in the same category, we'll, we'll separate it out to make sure that we've got each land use and, and, and we know clearly, uh, that, that, you know, which, which specific land use is, is either permitted or not permitted.
So shouldn't that be P P N instead of N N N?
Why P P N?
Don't we have automotive repair places that are already within those zones?
Oh, I got you. So, uh, basically, um, uh, we, we do have some that are there and, and those would probably be considered legal non-conforming uses. I think, um, uh, we, we may have, uh, and, and again, this is something that staffs work on, but, but that determination can be made. If you want to have a major automotive repair station in your Main Street Business District Zone, that's certainly something you could allow. I think it probably was, was, uh, understood and anticipated that the, the Main Street area is, is not gonna have quite as intensive uses like that and is gonna have more of a, uh, walkable, you know, Main Street type of a fill. Granted, we know that Highway six is gonna be widened. It's, it's a major thoroughfare in the community, but I think that's probably why, why Ryan kinda put it down that way is because it's probably consistent with other land uses that, that are a little bit more, um, impactful, uh, and intensive that way. But again, if, if you, uh, you know...
So they would become legal non-conforming.
So basically what legal non-conforming refers to is, is we have land uses, uh, that have been there and were legal. And, and maybe the, the code changed where it's not legal anymore, uh, for any new types of businesses that fall under that category. But the ones that were legal and were there before the ordinance changed, uh, can continue on as, as they've been operating, uh, and, and that's why they're considered legal non-conforming uses. So frankly, on our Main Street, we have a, a handful of, of single family homes and, and as, as we go down, you'll see that, that a dwelling, single family detached is, is not even allowed in, um, in the ma, the central business district and the Main Street Commercial. Uh, so obviously those homes can stay there and people can live them, but once they decide to do something different with the property or they change the, the land use, then they need to conform to our current zoning. Or if they decide, hey, we're gonna, you know, move out of the house and we're gonna use it as, as a, um, I don't know, sewing machine repair shop. Uh, once they start using it as a business, they will lose that, that legal non-conforming status and then they need to, to follow, uh, the current zoning. So, yeah, legal non-conforming is a little bit tricky. People will often refer to that as, as being grandfathered. And we get a lot of people who, who, uh, claim that they're grandfathered it, but again, it's key to make sure that they were legal at one time. Just because it's been there for twenty years, we don't make that assumption that it's grandfathered or legal non-conforming use. We really make sure that we, we can understand it, uh, that way. Uh, I facetiously use the example of, you know, if a crack house has been there undetected for twenty years, they don't get grandfathered because they've been there, you know, selling illegal drugs. It never was legal to sell illegal drugs, so, you know, and that's, that's never been an issue here, but that's just kind of a, uh, kind of a crazy example that, that illustrates that point. So we, we'll get oftentimes people that, that want us to write a letter saying that they're a duplex and they wanna sell it as a duplex. And so, uh, the burden of proof is on them to show us that they were approved as a duplex because oftentimes we'll look at and we'll say, that really looks like a single family home where they, they, uh, finished the inside of the garage and started renting it to two different people and they, they may have been doing that for a really long time, several years, but, uh, nonetheless, that's not anything that we can, uh, uh, recognize as a legal use unless it actually was legal at some point. So, uh, hopefully that, that kinda helps explain that a little bit more, but yeah, so we're gonna have a variety of, of legal non-conforming uses. Really look at this in terms of, of not what's existing, but what we want the land uses to look like on Main Street moving forward. Again, that's, that's no, no, uh, discrediting, uh, the way that people are using their property today because it very well may be appropriate, uh, based on their legal status for, for the several past years. So, uh, or the past several years. So anyways, um...
In the, in the future? Where would those be located?
Where would, what, be located?
Repair shops.
The repair shops.
So this, this land use table's not going to designate where they're specifically located. This is not a plan. This is really a, a, uh, a table that helps people understand what is allowed in their given zone. So for instance, tonight, we had somebody who's interested in looking at property and they went and looked at the table and they, they said, here's our desired use for that property. And they went through and it did not appear like the land use they wanted to have works there. Um, but it's, it's really, this is, this table's almost like an a la carte menu of, of, of rights that people have for that property. So, uh, you know, you, you could, you could say, I own property in the C B D, uh, the Central Business District Zone. I can't do it in a little daycare, but I could do, uh, you know, alcohol, I could do a, uh, and again, we need to, to change this. There's, I'm seeing little things that need to be updated, uh, still. But, you know, they could have a brew pub, they could have an ancillary commercial, uh, they could have, uh, recreation commercial, they could have retail sales and services commercial. A conference and convention facility is conditional. So that's the way to look at this table is, is really the options that, that, that you have to, to be able to, to use that property for. Now, this, this is where it comes in really important and that's why we're, we're... This this is where it comes in really important and that's why we're we're approaching it this way is as you look at that table. You might think you know what retail sales and services commercial means, but that's where the definitions come in is. And I rely heavily on those definitions uh to to make sure I know exactly where things fall, so for instance, we just went through that ordinance amendment. With the landscaping supply business, it didn't feel like there was a land use in that table that allowed for that. But under the definitions, heavy commercial, uh the definition of that really. Seem to fit with with something that was for an intensive use like a landscaping plus supply business, so. That's the thing is this sometimes maybe not as explicit and easy to see where that land use falls, but. That's kind of why we're going through this exercise is is to look at that and and make sure that we do that again. And again, this is just my opinion, I don't know how you feel about it, but when I when I saw that in our main street business district district zone, a small. Uh uh beauty shop or salon uh wasn't allowed, it kind of surprised me because I feel like that's a small. Kind of service, you know, service oriented business that seems like it would, that's that's exactly the type of business we want to see. In in our our little downtown, so these are the types of things and this is, these are the types of of conversations we've had. Uh with with uh the public that has made us realize that this is a good time to do a comprehensive review. Of our zones to make sure that 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 we are are reflecting and um our code is saying what what it is we really want to see.
So I guess my question is, I'm a mechanic, I've got a shop. I've got a shop in Provo, I want to expand and I want to have something here in Santaquin. Where's this, where's the place that I could expand to if those three places are restricted?
So again, this is just one area, I I would bet if I think in our commercial zone and probably our our industrial zone, it would allow for those areas, so. Again, zoning is is really, you know, and and I could pull up the zoning map, that's going to to designate where the zones are at. And then when you want to look at the details of what's allowed in that zone, then you come to the the actual code and the land use table, so. Again, our our whole city is not in one of these three areas, this is just the very downtown core area, but. Our commercial zone and we'll we'll eventually go through that process as well to review things in there, but just think of of this particular review. As and and maybe it is helpful to bring this up, as the the area uh. That consists of main street and a block north and south of main street, or is it two blocks?
It's a block.
So um that that is gonna be the easiest way for you to think about what it is we're we're really looking at and and trying to. Uh appropriately uh uh you know, refine and 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 reflect what it is we want to see as a city.
And just to restate, the idea is to look forward into the future, right? Five, ten years, what do we want this area to look like? The intent is not to put anyone out of business or make anyone move or you know, make anyone feel unwelcome, it's just, it's a kind of a visioning process, what do we want it to look like down?
That was my concern is in the future, if we wanted to track businesses, if this is one business that wants to move here, where are they gonna go? And if it's the industrial zone and the other commercial zones, we have place for that, then I'm fine with that. But if somehow this definition is excluding them everywhere, then I would be concerned.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
And the the definitions aren't going to define where they are and aren't allowed, the definition is just gonna define what that use is. The land use table is gonna indicate where they're allowed and not allowed, so. Um again, thinking in the context and that's really what the what the purpose of zoning is, is it's a tool. To put land uses where you want them to be in your community, so uh I'll just think of a a crazy example, uh. An amusement park, you know, maybe you want to zone to allow for an amusement park in your city, that's that's a a big priority for us. Again, I'm talking hypotheticals and obviously you don't want amusement park right in the middle of your quaint little downtown with along main street. That's not an appropriate appropriate place for it, but maybe you're okay with it being on the outskirts in in. Uh you know, an industrial zone or or something like that, now here's the thing is is we have all these zones. Um and and on the map, they they're they're kind of, they have their own unique name and you know, R ten is generally gonna be residential and the minimum square. Footage is gonna be ten thousand square feet, same thing with R eight, but that doesn't necessarily. Define exactly the way those lots look, like for instance, R eight, you would think, oh, those are all eight thousand square foot lots. Well, that's actually the traditional core of the city and a lot of the parcels that are there are actually quite large, they're a third of an acre if not. A half an acre, and so uh that's that's the minimum lot size that they could do and the subdivision that we we looked at tonight. Decided to full fully utilize utilize and exercise those rights that they had to have eight thousand square foot lots. Um and so I won't go through every zone, but but that's that's something for you as planning commission to understand as well is. This this is not a a uh um a list of zones that you have to choose from. If you wanted to create a unique specific zone that accommodated amusement parks and you wanted to call it the amusement park zone. Then you could create an amusement park zone and and define all the regulations in that that new zone and. Um and then find a place that you wanted to put that, uh now generally, we we don't do what we call spot zoning where we we do it just for that, we try and and. And uh and apply zoning in a way that gives people a variety of options, not not just you know, one option. Uh because that would kind of limit their their ability to to do something with the property, but. That's that's always something to consider, you know, many cities, they will have a a very detailed specific zone that is. You know, could be the gateway historic zone that is really trying to embrace the history and. And the the fact that it is it is the gateway to their community, uh you might, you know, so that that's always a a tool that we can exercise. Um something that you might see as well is we actually have a zone right now that's not even applied to any property in the city, but it still exists. Uh and that's called the professional office zone, or you might have seen the PO zone if you're looking in the commercial zones. We don't have anywhere in the city that's zoned that way, but we haven't this, we haven't felt like uh. A need to repeal that language, because maybe there's a need for that in the future and we have those regulations kind of there on the books and and it's something that can be a useful tool in the future, so. Uh I don't mean to go get too uh long winded and and get into a zoning ten ten type of a a situation, but hopefully this this helps you kind of understand. What it is we're trying to accomplish with this comprehensive review.
I ask a couple of questions regarding this law.
Step up to the microphone, would you state your name for us?
Yeah, so um what I'm hearing is they don't have a.
Would you state your name for us?
Yes, it's Rod Ekins, um with the owner of the, oh, the one interesting this law. Um so it's not zoned commercial now, um once it's zoned commercial. Um would it be allowed to have, say, an apartment attached to the side of it or the back of it?
So the.
Yeah, go ahead, maybe you can, um I know you've made some proposed changes to address the concern, right? And maybe we can review what changes have been made.
Yeah, it's a may- maybe the the best way to illustrate is this, this is our code that's online, uh what I had up before is is a draft ordinance, which is a document that basically. Shows changes to code and is considered by the planning commission and city council. But to show you, this this is our current code and this is really the current law as as a as it stands today. And there's there's these tabs over here that help you navigate and and uh you know, because I look at it all every day, I I'm familiar with where things are at. But but title ten, um uh. Chapter twenty is where all the zones are established, and so uh in your specific situation. The property you're looking at is in the main street business district zone and specifically your property is in an area called main street residential, so you would come to this table. And look at the column under MSR and you would go through and see, do they have a nail salon, you know, I go to.
So this is in development, then the.
Right, and so to answer your question, uh that's something I think could be considered and again, maybe it's not. Uh specifically called a a nail salon, maybe it might fit under a broader definition. Uh for smaller retail type businesses, and so that's when I mentioned earlier, that's why. My my next best friend in the code is the definition section, uh which is title ten, chapter eight. And that's where I went through and and we looked at this and we thought, okay, well, where where would a nail salon be be at, and so. Uh sometimes it takes a little bit of time, uh and and we have to kind of sift through and and find where where that might apply. And I.
So so what is the path?
Spot here, I I I'm trying to remember.
Been going through it and I've read pretty much every single one, the closest I can find that would match for a nail salon would be under commercial retail sales and services.
Right, so so there's the definition for it and and just like Commissioner Mcneff mentioned. We we try and find something that at least is close, because sometimes the definitions will say and similar type of uses, so. Uh commercial retail sales and services, so if we go back to the main street business district zone. Uh and it was commercial retail sells and services, uh there it is, commercial retail sells and services. And in the MSR zone, it is prohibited right now, so that that is something that I think could be considered is. You know, it's main street residential, but nonetheless, we allow for for something like that, uh.
Okay, what does what does the path look like going forward?
So we're we're considering this and it's something that uh may or may not change it. Uh I I can't really give you that indication of whether that'll change or not, I think it may be something that's appropriate, but that's just me. But.
So the path moving forward would be make sure we get it approved before she makes a purchase.
Right, and and you'd want to do that to make sure, because obviously that's that there's always a risk when when it's not allowed and and you're buying property that currently doesn't allow it. Now, I think the the purpose in maybe you being here tonight is to get a sense of maybe some of the discussion that's happening and and. And and seeing whether or not there there's, you know, feelings towards, yeah, that's, we agree with that, that that's something that could be considered, but. That still is a risk on your part and it's even more of a risk, because the planning commission is not the final say, the city council ultimately makes the decision on any legislative action, so. Um I'm I'm very careful to tell people that this this is not, you're not a shoe in to have this allowed, but.
Is that something that can be done before the property is?
We we are, we are gonna take this at at the the most appropriate pace for the city, it may take a few uh. A a few more weeks, if not a few more months, uh that's that's the effort that we're making to do a comprehensive review, however. Anybody who uh uh anybody can can uh initiate a legislative process to to make a proposal. To change the zoning or to change the code, uh but there's a process for that and there's there's obviously that's something that you would need to initiate. Uh and there's a fee that accompanies it and that sort of a thing, so uh you're you're welcome to do that, but. It just so happens we're we're addressing the the topic that that could in fact address uh the situation that you're looking at, so. Again, it it may not necessarily coincide with your ideal timing, but you know, you can you can wait and see how this process work that works out or. You you have that right to to initiate the process yourself and and it'll be a little bit quicker, but.
It's essentially the same process, right?
Exactly.
So.
Okay, so so we's moving forward, we should initiate the process, start working through it, get approval.
That is completely up to you, I I'm not gonna tell you whether or not it's it's, you should do that or not, but I I will tell you that it's something we're working on anyways and.
It's probably the least amount of risk.
Well.
Have a question for you, what what is your intent on property, first you said a nail salon, then you said an apartment?
Well, I I just wondered if that's a possibility.
So so was that the intent to put a nail salon, the par- apartment in the back or something?
Um it could be in the plans, if if it's not, we'd want to know ahead of time, that's all I'm asking.
That would be dwelling.
If it's not a possibility, then.
With the.
Looking to helping people out, but we need to know what the intent is.
Sure.
So so if you let us know your intent, we can look into.
The the intent primarily would be a salon, a nail salon.
And as it stands now, Jason, the verbiage that you propose to strike and add would allow for that property address. To become a nail salon, that's how I understood it anyways. In the definition where you.
Well, the accessory unit attach and detach is good.
So right now, we haven't made that change, and again, this this is a a working document and 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 this was just a a a walk in that came in yesterday, I think, so.
I'm I'm just curious what your intent was, except because if it's just an accessory dwelling unit, attached or detached, that's allowed, but. Where the hangup is with the commercial element.
Okay, so it'd be, if it was on strictly commercial, it would be for commercial use, no, probably not an apartment, okay. Okay.
But being written main street residential, it does open up uh that possibility. We have a definition for a mixed use development, which is a conditional use, and so again. What's the definition of a mixed use, you would go there and and learn and see if if that's something that that works for them, so. Um yeah, again, this is this is a a very kind of a a work in progress type of a a. Exercise we're going through and and everything's on the table in the legislative process, it is, it's really. Let's put it this way, it's your recommendation and you can recommend whatever you'd like to to the city council.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So if we're looking at what we want downtown and along main street, right? Um and then we look at our table to know what's allowed and what isn't right now.
Uh huh.
Um there's a couple of things I think wouldn't be a bad idea if we changed.
Okay.
Um for instance, like the first one is the bed and breakfast homes is currently not allowed in the CBD. And I think like if that old building that's currently a um. What is it called when they sell houses? Real estate, thank you.
That happens to be your fellow commissioner.
Yeah, I I know, it's just the words went out of my head.
Yep, yep.
If they ever sold that, I think it'd be a really cute bed and breakfast or something like that, so I don't think we should limit. That out of that area, um and that's just the first one, I don't know how you guys feel about that.
No, I totally.
Um.
What about, what about a fitness club?
Mm-hmm. I think that would be fun, too.
Popped into mine, too. Okay, that's not defined on here.
And there's no dance hall or disco allowed, but what, I know, but if somebody wanted to have a dance hall, I think it'd be awesome.
Well, it it is allowed, it's a conditional use right now.
Oh.
And 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 again, a kid.
Well, I was looking at also the MSR, not just the others.
And and that's the next fun exercise we could go through to to really update our code is is a conditional use should be looked at as being permitted. But it's just got extra conditions to to address potential impactful i- impacts of of. Of a use that that might be a little bit more intensive, so um but but the next exercise would be, we don't really. Do a good job in our code of defining what those conditions are, we do for some uses, but not all uses, so if we have something listed as a conditional use anywhere. We need to make sure that we have those conditions clearly stated of of what they need to do in order to address those potential impacts.
So I guess in my mind right now, I'm just not even considering conditional use, because I know that's like going down a rabbit hole, so I'm just thinking yes or no.
Yeah.
Think of it as permitted.
Yeah.
And that's and that's a great thing to to consider, because frankly, there are some cities who are trying to just do away altogether with conditional uses. I know that there's a lot of legal councils who would love to see you do away with conditional uses, it's easier to just say permitted or not permitted, but. A conditional use is like, yeah, it's permitted, but we want to to make sure we we emphasize. Some additional conditions that will address impacts.
So I can see that with some things, but for the most part, I think we can just say yes or no for a lot of things. Yeah.
Well, and even with permitted uses, we still have regulations, they need to be, it's not just a.
It's not just, go ahead and do whatever you want with it.
They want with it, there's still regulations, so I it it does seem a little bit confusing, but conditional uses is something that's kind of. Um morphed over the years, because a lot of cities looked at conditional uses as as, you know, they could shoot from the hip and and just apply. Uh conditions on on a given, you know, case by case bas- basis and and that's been challenged and and something that's that's highly discouraged. Is is being, you know, um uh you know, not equal for for a use. Uh that may be the exact same use, but it has different conditions on it.
Can you go back to the zoning map real quick? Okay, so the MSR isn't on main street, it's like halfway.
Yep.
Through the block.
It's halfway through the block.
So if we're trying to create twenty years in the future, a lot of people might sell their homes and want to change it into something else. Um what could those be or not be, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And so thi- this is the uh the the type of of. Uh train of thought you should have as you are reviewing this language is is really, you know, um. I I hesitate doing this example, because it's kind of a stereotypical of 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 planning, but you're kind of playing SimCity. You're you're thinking, what what do we want our city to look like and what are the appropriate uses that are there, now. It's I I should slap myself for using that example, because it's not that at all, but it's it's in in a sense. It's, I, I should slap myself for using that example cuz it's not that at all, but it's, it's in, in a sense, uh. Uh, thinking about what, what, you know, future uses could be on that property, and that's where the general plan comes in. And gives you some guidance of, of kind of the general look and feel that you, you wanna have in certain areas of your city, you know, our general plan and. And really zoning should be a reflection of that general plan, of your general plan and, and what, what generally you want your city to look like. And the zoning that I see here, and this, this zoning's been in place for a long time, but. As I look at the zoning map, I can tell that the city had a, uh, an interest in really focusing business in, uh, around, in and around Main Street. Um, and sometimes I use the example with people that zoning map is kind of like a bullseye, uh, where. Where you have intensive uses in the core and as you move further away from that bullseye, um. Then it gets less intensive and, and, you know, larger lots and, and, uh, you know, a, a little bit more spread out, so. That's, that's kind of a, a general, very generalistic way of, of describing zoning, but that, that's maybe a, one way to think about it, so. We started with the Main Street Business District Zone because generally in the very core heart of your city, you're gonna have the most intensive uses and. And, uh, you know, we'll probably move to the C-one commercial, the interchange commercial zone next, and that, that'll be very similar because. Usually you have more intensive uses and, and businesses around your interchange cuz it's got the most exposure to, to the. The people driving on the freeway and, and getting on, on and off the freeway. So I, I apologize if I'm being very overly simplistic with this, but, uh. Sometimes I think it's, it's helpful for people who may not be very accustomed to, to zoning and, 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 and what it is and, and how it functions.
Alright, so I'm have, I'm sorry, somebody else says, um. I don't know, alright, um, so I'm having a thought in the back of my mind. Um, we are agricultural friendly city, and we wanna kind of keep it that way, um, we recently just changed the. Um, so there's a plat on each of the things saying that it could be next to a farm or whatever, all that stuff. Um, so to go along with that, I'm looking through all the definitions and trying to see what could be possible because. Not all of us can be big family farmers, some, like a lot of us have. Large garden and wanna be able to sell produce or whatever, and we're doing that with the farmer's market a lot, um, so. Uh, we don't wanna just start farmer's market wherever, but I think it would be helpful if we allowed. People to be able to sell a lot of these things, like the street vendors currently not allowed in a couple of those areas, but. That's the type of thing that you could have a little stand out there in the summertime if you wanted to.
Right.
And that's a walkable thing if multiple people in your neighborhood were doing it.
Right.
And so that's another thing that I was kind of thinking about that we could change on the table and.
Yeah, and, and, uh, I think in this, this, this particular area, we, we have, uh, things that. Again, MSR looks like it's, it's a little bit more restrictive on, on, uh, smaller retail type, type commercial businesses. But, yeah, it, it was probably before you got on the planning commission, it's kind of been put on the shelf, but there, there was a, a. A draft ordinance we looked at where, where we focused on agriculture and, and. Potential of, of farms being able to sell their produce onsite, in, in more of a retail type of a, a fashion, um. So, yeah, I, I completely understand where you're coming from and that's something we've looked at and, and we may be looking. Kind of resurrecting that, that, that draft and, and considering that.
So I kinda wanna think about that and not just on the large farm scales, but if we also encourage. Smaller homestead type things, people using their, the land that they have.
Right.
Then that'll help keep it an agricultural town and allow them to do things.
And that, that is a great point, but something that will probably be more of a discussion later on. Because right now, we're just focused on the, the very core center part of our city, which is already gonna allow for, for something like that, now. We're, we're not, we don't necessarily have a farm that's right on Main Street, but we certainly allow for retail sells, and so. Uh, people who want to sell produce is certainly something that's allowed already, but.
But not street vendors in the MSR.
Uh, that, that's true, so MSR is something that, that does apply to the point that you just made.
So I guess that's where I was going is allowing it to branch out a little bit and let it in the MSR.
I just think it's interesting that we have businesses on Main Street that are in one of these that are not included in the table. For instance, the beauty salon, um, we also have a grocery store that's there.
So the grocery store is not in the Main Street Business District, that's in the C-one zone.
No, um, I think he's talking about Ivan Hoffs.
Oh, oh, the market, yep.
And then we have Goldilocks, which is a hair nail salon.
Are they just more of a convenience store?
But I mean.
There, there is market, yeah.
Yeah, so the, so.
So as long as we're.
The, this, the beauty s- s- uh, store you're, you're talking about is permitted in, in that zone cuz it is in the. Either Main Street Commercial or, or Central Business District, so that, that's perfectly, that's not a legal nonconforming use, that is legal because it is legal in that zone. Uh, the market, that's, that's another good example of potentially a legal nonconforming use because that market's been there for a very long time. And I don't see something that really jumps out to me, but I haven't gone through this with every, every use on Main Street, it's kind of like. You react to, uh, increase and.
Retail sale.
But to your point, I mean, that's, is that something that we want to allow, and if so, we ought to include it because that's what we're doing.
And I think it would be, it'll be who has to do it.
Or commercial retail sales, it's allowed.
So, and, and again, it's always going, it's, I can't answer that question really easily. Usually when I get inquiries, it takes me a little bit to make sure I, I, I've got my, my ducks in a row, but I'm, I'm looking through and, and it. You know, again, my next best friend is the definition section, I'm looking at convenience store commercial, maybe a, a store like Ivan Hoffs fits. Under that classification, I would go and look closer to that definition. Uh, because I don't know if I'd, I'd say Ivan Hoffs is a grocery store, it's, it's.
Market.
More of a market, which probably is, is closer to a convenience store, and it may very well fit under that definition, so. This, this is, this is a, a great example of kind of the, the way to look at this.
So what do you consider food trucks, Jason?
So food tricks, food trucks are a different animal.
They're very, very popular.
So the state has actually significantly, uh. Uh, stepped in and defined where food trucks are and aren't allowed, so.
So then we need to have that so we know.
In a commercial zone on a public street, food trucks are allowed, um, uh, on a piece of property. Uh, food trucks, if they're, and I don't wanna go too far cuz, cuz, uh. I don't, don't quote me on this, but we, we just went through that recently with a food truck that's, that's there on Main Street, and because it's in on a commercially zoned property. Because they had permission from the property owner, uh, we could not deny them a business license. But, aren't, my understanding is that they still need to follow, uh, uh, some of our land use regulations, but it's, it's, the state has kind of. Uh, made it so it's harder for cities to say no to food trucks.
They're getting more and more popular, and I don't know if you'd want to say no to them.
Yeah, they draw in so many crowds, it helps the farmer's market when they're there.
Yep, and so, yeah, you, you, you brought up a particular thing that it, that is, is unique, it's, it's kind of like billboards. Billboards are another thing that the state really has, has, uh, um. Uh, inserted themselves into, uh, regulating, and so it's, it's not easy to, to respond to a billboard. Cuz you have to not just look at our code, but also look at state code, and make sure that our code is not sideways with state code cuz state code trumps our local code. So, those are, those are two, bring up a great example of, of a, a, a use that, that the state. Uh, has a little bit more to say about it.
And the state likes it, is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm, the state is doing more and more to allow for it. And, 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 and preventing cities from being able to, to regulate it and, and say no to them.
So then maybe we should just pull the plug and say, yeah, street vendors are allowed. And then commercial retail sells and.
Well, again, thi- thi- this is a process where, where, you know, this is, this is, uh. Uh, this is our city and, and we, the, the state has granted cities, uh, zoning powers, and this is, this is. Exercising that, that power that the state has given municipalities, uh, ultimately the council makes that final say on a legislative action, but. Uh, your role in this is, is to look at it, uh, as a planning commission and, and provide your recommendation, so, um. Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna go, go down too many rabbit holes, but, but you'll see there's certain lan- land uses that are, are mentioned in here, uh. Because of, of, of certain things that have either happened at a state level or things that have happened in court. Um, uh, constitutional rights.
This is, I like, I like this format a lot better than the Excel spreadsheet, I'll tell you that, this is a lot, a lot easier to, uh, work with.
Right.
So.
Is there anything else that's not in this table that we think ought to be added? I noticed, for example, there, that we don't have in there that a theater would be allowed.
That's what I was just thinking.
There used to be a theater on Main Street.
Was there?
Yeah, back in the day.
And is that something we ought to add? I mean, it seems like in the main street business district, that would be.
Like a cute small little town theater, yeah, I think that'd be fun.
I think a the- theater and a fitness place should be allowed.
Yeah, a lot of these businesses and things that are, just keep it small, not large scale like they've been building, like out in Spanish Fork or whatever, but. Smaller scale businesses, and we could probably get a lot more people to wanna move here for that too.
And, and you know, rather than just saying, we're gonna allow for a theater and we hope we get what we, we all pictured in our head, you know, you may. Uh, want to differentiate between, cuz a theater right now says a building used primarily for the presentation of movies projected upon a screen. May include ancillary uses such as arcades, theater also includes a building used primarily for the presentation of live stage productions or performance. In that definition doesn't say anything about size and quaintness and, so, if you allowed for a theater.
Omegaplex could come in and buy.
Someone could buy enough property and say, you allow for a theater and there's nothing that you regulate on the size of my theater and they could build. A Omegaplex, so.
I don't mind that.
That, that's.
So that's when we would add in a de- separate definition.
It, it may be.
Yeah.
Something.
Again, and, and, and it's also good to remember too.
Scale theater versus.
Right, and, and that, that's.
It's a small IMAX.
Mini IMAX.
But on the other side, if it's not in our table, they could approach us at any time with their idea.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And, and look for approval for that, you're correct.
That's correct, and, and sometimes when we, we, uh, when it's not clear, we'll, we'll take that. I, what I will say is, is if it's ambiguous, then usually it, uh, uh. The, the, the rights are, are, take the side of, of the property owner. So if there's, if it's clear, if it's unclear of, of the use, then, uh, it, it. Maybe something that the property owner has a right to do because we're not clear enough about it not being allowed.
So should we be focusing on what we don't want there more than what we want to allow there?
I think, I think it's both, um, and again, it's, it's hard, uh, I, I, I understand, and that's. You know, we, we, we deal with that frustration as well, we, we have a provision in our code that says, uh. Uh, prohibited unless express, ex- expressly permitted. That sounds great in theory, but I've had many, uh, legal councils tell me that just does not hold up in court. If you don't want it in your community or you don't want it in a zone, then you have, you got to explicitly prohibit it.
That's what I'm saying, I wonder if we should focus on what we don't want more than, cuz they could approach at any time for.
Right.
For an approval of any use.
Well, and again, I, I don't wanna go down a rabbit hole with you, but you'll see in our land use table, um, and people will be like, why would we ever even list that? But again, this, this is based on case law and constitutional rights, and that's why we have sexually oriented businesses on our land use table. And expressly, uh, prohibited, but, yeah, I, I won't go down that rabbit hole, but there's, there's, there's court cases that have talked about. You know, free speech and, and, you know, constitutional rights for those types of businesses, so.
Can I make a recommendation, I mean, trying to like kind of address the folks that are here? That needs some sort of hope or outlook or something?
Feedback?
Yeah, like to change on the table, Main Street residential to conditional use. Because the way that we've changed the definition to commercial retail services for a beauty salon. They could potentially, you know, ask for permission at least, and then we address them specifically. Instead of saying, no, we don't want that, because I feel like we don't have stuff like that, but also across the street from the building that they're trying. To purchase is a massage place, like, it seems like they go pretty well together, like, why wouldn't we put it there? So if we change that to conditional use, at least they can, we can make that proposal. To go to city council so that they could potentially ask for permission.
Right, and, and if, if, if that's something you want to do and accommodate, then you could do that, uh. We, we, we would not be able to take any action on that and move, move a, a recommendation forward to the council cuz we haven't had, held a public hearing on that proposal. So, that's what I, I, I got with that, that it's like. You can kind of wait for this process to work itself out, and again, it might be a little bit slower than what they want because it's, we're, we're taking a comprehensive look. But if they want to move faster, or if the, the city decides that, that, that's a priority to, to really help them move faster, then we can do that.
Yeah, but then can we blue line it and that, that, so people know that that's something we're looking for?
We could draft an ordinance that doesn't address one thing except for that one little letter. That certainly could happen, and we, we just did that actually with that.
I'm just saying, uh, the, add it on there and then public forum, it'll be there and people can see.
So, I would make a recommendation that you go to the public forum at the city council meeting as well, and express these concerns there. Cuz they're the ones that are ultimately gonna make the decision, and they could probably give you a better idea of what's gonna be allowed there.
What their feelings are on, on, on that particular.
So I would do the same thing next Tuesday night at the, at the, at the city council meeting, and just, and just speak in the public, public forum.
Now, that's, that's not a guarantee that the council's going to give you their feeling.
They, they will know your intent and your interest.
But they, they may or may not, and, you know, even after this meeting, you have a council member in the room that you are welcome to, to pick his brain and see what he feels about it, so.
I've got one other question for the planning.
I, I, yeah.
Go ahead, step up to the microphone.
Rod Ekins with, uh, Wall Finley, um, concerning this salon. Um, the question I had, what, what does, you mentioned earlier Highway Six widening, what does that look like?
So it's gonna be widened to basically a five-lane road, which two, two lanes in each direction with a middle turn lane.
Are you gonna go to the north, or?
No, so it's just gonna be on Main Street, uh, wha- what you see from Fourth East is that's gonna be perpetuated all the way to probably about. Uh, six hundred west.
Okay.
Uh, that's, that's kind of what's in the, we, we actually have funding for that, it's just, we have to wait a few years.
You just have to widen it somewhere, does, does the, does the road, the fland eat up go north or does it go s-?
So, both sides, and the city has already, uh, uh, done the, the work to, to acquire the right of way. We have all the right of way that we need to do that, um, that widening, uh, a lot of people think, well, where, where's the room for that and, and. Part of it will be, you know, reduction in the size of the shoulder and, and there's, we, we have, that's, all that work's been done to make sure we have the appropriate right.
They're gonna squeeze it out.
It's, it's not gonna be squeezed, it's, it's.
I think the property that in question for you is way outside of that boundary. They're not gonna encroach into your space if that's.
Go, go stand on Fourth East, which has five lanes, and just picture that going down the rest of the way, and you'll, you'll see that we have plenty of room for it. It, it sounds a lot more, uh.
Aggressive.
It sounds a lot more, uh, wide than it really is.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So one point to bring up, I think, when, when we change a letter, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but just something to keep in mind, if we change an N to a C, for example, or a P. To address a specific concern, we are also allowing it for the more general definition as well, and so. If we do that, we gotta keep in mind that, basically what we're saying is that everything in the definition of commercial retail, sales and service, we're okay with in the MSR.
Right.
Which is kind of a transition residential zone to commercial zone, right, and so, um, again, like, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do that, but it's just. Something we need to keep in mind.
An- another valid point to bring up is, is, you know, as an example, if we change that to a C and, and. And our legal counsel looks at it, they would say, well. This day and age, what are the specific conditions for that, and so that's something we need to keep in mind as well, if we feel like a nail salon is. An intensive enough use that we need to have a list of specific, uh, uh, conditions that mitigate. Potential impacts of a nail salon, so, maybe it's, I know a C feels like it's, it's a little, it's kind of the, the safe. Way to go, go at it, but, you know, maybe a nail salon is, is, is a P and, and, you know, ma- maybe we want to extract it from the. Commercial retail sells and services definition, but.
And make it its own entity.
You're talking like, as far as conditions, we'd have to list like, uh, parking, parking allowances and hours of operation and those kind of things that you could mitigate.
Yes, and that's the thing, even with permitted uses, we already have those conditions, we already have a parking ordinance that addresses it, we already have a landscaping, uh, code. So there's things that still apply to it, but it would be, and again, I'm, I'm using crazy examples just to emphasize the point, but. But maybe you say, you know what, we don't like the, the smell of, that comes from nail polish. So we're gonna have a special condition that, that, you know, uh. So we're gonna have a special condition that that, you know, uh smells need to be mitigated with some sort of ventilation system. You know, again, I'm just crazy examples, tha- that's that's an example of of. You look at that as an intensive use and and you say, we need to add more conditions to to that, then then what might be the typical requirements for. Every other use. Again, we have general parking for every land use, that's not a specific condition you need to really go into. We have specific landscaping requirements, we have specific uh po- you know, uh, we have speci- uh. Broad requirements that apply to all land uses, so it's it's those those land uses that might have something that is. Particularly, uh, you know.
Unique.
Unique, yeah, and so we we have a few uses that we we do do that with, uh, and and. As you'll see, some of the land uses, and and Ryan's done a good job of this, residential facility for persons with a disability. We have an entire chapter just for that, that's going to specifically talk about specific regulations for that. And so, uh, that's a a conditional use may look like that, or it may just be. You know, a small paragraph in our conditional use section that really helps define what those conditions are, so.
So I'm looking at the definition of the commercial retail sales and services and reading through it, and I don't see. At least personally, I don't see any issue with any of those. Anything in that definition from going into the MSR. Meaning includes pottery and jewelry, leather goods, um. Launder mats, just anything that sells, and if they have to meet the codes anyway, then I don't see what the issue would be.
Full service car wash?
Is that on there? That's a separate thing somewhere.
That's the code as it stands now, in the draft, um, to change it, commercial retail sales and services includes. The beauty salon and all that. But I agree with Nikki that I don't see why any of those things wouldn't be permitted there. Especially if we are trying to keep that like Main Street, small town, you want your shops and services to be. Smaller, you don't want this.
We don't want.
You know.
To give somebody a reason to walk around and go shopping.
Yeah, and then like I said, Ryan Harris has done a good job of that, because uh, uh, again, I think he addressed. That particular definition in a way, because self-service or full-service car washes, I think.
It's completely separate.
Fits in a completely separate definition, and it probably is is more consistent with that, so. Again, a a an example of of discrepancies and things that we're finding, um.
One reason I can see is the majority of those parcels in MSR are currently single family residential.
Mm-hmm.
So you go and put businesses in there, you're gonna you're gonna impact those residential. Um, uses, so.
I like this definition better than.
I I do like this definition.
And a lot of the, a lot of the businesses that you see there, you, it's not uncommon to see them in an old house, right?
Mm-hmm, right, exactly.
And so where that's a transition zone, I feel better about that.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And that I'd go go back to my bullseye metaphor, that's that's kind of. Uh, the logic that a lot of pe- cities will have with their zoning is is to have, you know, zones that are transitioned. So the MSR was really meant to be a good transition from some more intensive uses on Main Street, commercial uses on Main Street and. Straight R eight residential, so what what are the best uses that help make that transition and and? I don't think a nail salon is is. And it, you know, impactful enough that's going to really, you know, you have to draw the line somewhere. And sure, it might be right next to a single family home, but you know, where do you draw the line? And and I don't think a nail salon is is gonna really. Uh, you know, if if you live a a block off of Main Street, you're you're living close to a a commercial area. Yep, it it shouldn't be a surprise that there there's commercial, it's just a stone's throw away.
Yeah. So I think there's a good case for making this permitted.
I think so too.
In the MSR. Which would address the concern.
Mm-hmm, right, and then they wouldn't have to worry about anything.
Assuming it makes it through the process.
Right.
Um, okay, I wanna circle back around to something uh Commissioner Hoffman said, which was, there are things that are not in the table that. As you have said, would be implicitly allowed, essentially, even though the code. States otherwise, and so I think we ought to look at things that maybe should be added to the table as not permitted. And the things that I noted, as I was looking through the definitions, were things like impound yards, junkyards, um, slaughterhouses, storage units.
Fat rendering plants.
Heavy commercial probably.
Right.
Because we don't want it there.
There's a place for those things, but probably not right in our.
Right, not right there.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, could you repeat those? So we got.
Okay, sorry.
Heavy commercial.
Yeah, so I had impound yards, junkyards, um. Actually put down dwelling, bachelor or bunkhouse, I don't know, something to think about maybe, um. Slaughterhouses, storage units, truck stop, and maybe a mobile home park. Those are the things I noticed.
And these are all things that you wanna make prohibited?
I'm opening it for a discussion.
Okay, impound yards, junkyards, sorry, I'm trying to keep up with you. So heavy commercial, impound yards, junkyards, dwelling, bachelor, bunkhouse, truck stop, slaughterhouse.
Storage units. And maybe mobile home park.
And just so I understand, Trevor, you're saying we're addressing things we absolutely don't want in MSR.
Right.
Right?
Right, the the point would be.
And it's not in the table right now.
Not not just MSR, but all of the Main Street zones.
Yeah, that's the next step, right? Would it be, would the any of those be appropriated in any of these zones?
Right.
Yeah, well, and and again, we we speak about it, because I think it's easier, but. Technically speaking, we're looking at one zone, there just happens to be three separate areas in that zone, which is is unique, but. Um, but yeah, so you you have three areas that that you can you can uh tailor to to what. Uh, uh, customize to what you what you think is is best.
Anything else? Do you guys think we should add?
So those are all things. I'm assuming that you wanna make prohibited.
Well, I'm curious what you're thinking is on the not allowing the bachelor dwelling.
Um, I brought that up because it's a dwelling and we're talking mostly about business zones, I mean, maybe in the MSR.
Yeah, that's one thing in the MSR, but not those others.
Yeah.
A lot of people are having to bunk together these days.
Right, for sure.
And as I understand it, a lot of the farms who have. Um, seasonal workers and stuff, they have places already that they use.
Yeah, and I think that's something we talked about.
And it's not on Main Street at all, so.
With the agricultural business changes.
I'm curious, Jason, why libraries struck out?
Uh.
Cause I moved it to public facilities.
Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed that too.
Okay, I missed that.
I guess you could still have have a library there, I get.
A commercial library.
I appreciate it, Ryan, Ryan's really kind of taking this under his wing and and worked on this, um, and so. I, we didn't really have a time to to look at it really deep together, that's we'll continue to do that, but. Again, we wanted to kind of just get a working draft in front of you, so you could start reacting to things, so this is perfect. If if a library is something that you still think is fine in that zone, then.
Yeah.
But I I think he probably did that, because the library, the city library that we have is was recently rezoned and and put in the public facility zone.
Well, even there, it's all permitted now for public or quasi-public buildings.
Yeah.
Those are all permitted uses now.
Mm-hmm. Yep, but but maybe there's there's a a private library, I don't know. And it's it's also good to remember, just because you put it in the table, doesn't mean it's gonna happen.
Right.
And I I know I it's not, this is not a, if you zone for it, it will come. So.
Um. Did we include feedlots? Cause I don't think we should have feedlots there on Main Street.
Yeah, that's a fair point, I don't see it in the table.
It's not a feedlot, it's just a pasture.
Pastures, it says it's separate from a feedlot.
But have you looked at the definition of feedlots? Uh, you might assume it's just a pasture, but.
I read the definition and. It won't get rid of the horses out there next to.
Well, I.
Family Dollar.
I I s- the again, this is this is something that I see as being, it's gonna take some time, and and I know we we want to accommodate and and if. If that's a direction you you'd like to take, then then we can do that and and try seeing what we can do for them. But I appreciate Chairman Wood's comment that. That sounds really great when you have someone who has a a wonderful idea and you have no issue with what they're gonna do. But it's different when you kind of think comprehensively, and and you guys have done that tonight, and so I'll take your direction on that if if you wanna do something specific, but. Again, I I bring. Th- this is this is gonna, this is gonna take some time, and uh. And it it'll probably take a little bit more time than even expected, because you know, I've mentioned that, um. Uh, Ryan Harris has been really helpful in in doing uh some work to help with that, but unfortunately, Ryan's maybe moving on, so. Uh, I'm gonna not have his help with these types of things, so we're we're going through some.
Motion denied, not allowed.
I believe me, I've told him that, but no, we're 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 going through a transition right now, and and so, uh. Uh, there might, there may be a a, we we might be sh- uh, short-staffed, so, um. Anyways, it's it's, you know, like I explained, it's 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 a process and and this is something we're already looking at, but but obviously. Uh, they have their options of initiating themselves or waiting for this, or. You know, seeing if if you wanna make that a priority and 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 kind of separate that from this this uh. Uh, effort that we're making and and doing that as its own, own or or own ordinance, so.
I have a request for you, Jason, something that you could look into, um, could you possibly look into a definition for salons and kind of combine? Like the permanent makeup establishment, um, hair, nails, um, all the cosmetology fields, you know. Cause I I I per- I I think that's a good trans- use for the transition areas.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but if, so if we could come up with kind of a salon definition.
Would you include barber shops in that?
Barber shops, right, correct?
Yeah, no, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Those types of services.
It would clarify.
We have, we have all like permanent makeup and tattoos and and separate things like that, that's kind of all cosmetology related.
Cosmetology, beauty.
Right, well, could we come up with a salon definition and?
I think that's a great idea, and what's something you said, I think, further emphasized why I personally feel like it should not be that big of a deal, and that's because. We allow for those types of things as home occupation.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
So if it's if it's allowed in the middle of a residential neighborhood, why is it?
That's what I've been thinking about too, I'm like, people do leatherworking in their garage, it's just.
Right.
Would you uh work, come up with a a definition for us for that?
Yeah, uh, we could, we can extract that.
And then we can maybe add that to these uh zones as we go through these as well. And then we could get rid of some of these individualized uses as well.
So you keep talking about the workout thing, that would be possibly under private club?
For a fitness center, what would that be defined as?
I think private club called out specifically that it was not a fitness center, if I remember reading that.
Yeah, I think we have need to have a definition for that one too.
Mm-hmm, cause I'm not seeing something else for that.
Okay, yes. And that might be, that might be recreation commercial.
Hmm.
So commercial recreation establishment providing completely enclosed recreation activities, accessory uses may include preparation, serving of food, and there's still equipment related to. Uh, the enclosed uses included in this, so bowling, rollers, skating, billiards, indoor and outdoor swimming pools, tennis clubs, strength training and related amusements.
There it is.
Yeah.
So we we do have that, but I've. Uh, sorry, losing my spot, uh, commercial recreation. We have permitted in the central business district and the.
Conditional use.
But then we have a conditional in the MSR.
Okay.
We're good there.
Can I ask a question while we're talking about commercial recreation?
Uh-huh.
I was just curious, um, why arcade is called out separately and not included just as commercial recreation?
I have no idea.
Because arcades are where the naughty kids used to go.
I guess.
And we have to, you know.
I had a lot of fun there.
Music man it and say, it's not allowed, no pool in this town.
Well, and that that might just be exactly what we just talked about, is is maybe they felt like a need to extract arcade from a more comprehensive definition.
Yep.
Just like we talked about with beauty, uh, cosmetology type businesses. So. So I guess my question for you is is. We'll continue to work on this and and bring this back and continue this discussion and continue to to react to uh this working draft. Do you want me to just proceed forward that way, or do you want me to extract a potential cosmetology definition and. Allowing uh in a a draft ordinance which would allow that in the MSR, uh, to, uh.
Not just the MSR, but I think it should be allowed in all three zones.
Okay, oh, you're right, right, and I think it's already allowed, or, yeah.
I agree.
So is that something you want me to bring as a separate draft ordinance instead of public hearing for, so that we can accommodate?
And just do that by itself?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'll I'll do that, and because the planning commission is another body that that can initiate. Uh, a a a proposed legislative action, a proposed amendment to a code.
We were thinking about doing it anyway, and if we've got a request that we can, you know, look at and kind of get that in front, there's no reason not to, I think, so.
Okay, I'll do that and we'll we'll do that separate.
That's all I'm seeing right now, I think.
And when are we gonna notice the public hearing for the rest of this?
Uh, like I say, I think it may be good to 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 notice the comprehensive. Um, uh, code amendment, the comprehensive ordinance, the the ordinance that would address this comprehensively as well. Again, that doesn't necessarily mean you need to take action and make a recommendation on it, but at some point. That's a requirement, and obviously, we wanna have this fleshed out to where if we do hold a public hearing, the public has something to react to. I think we're far enough along with the draft that that they have enough that if they they wanna chime in, then then we'll re- react to it, uh. Um.
Especially where we're keeping it separate to zones, we're not doing it all at once, it's more easy to chew.
Well, and and on second thought, maybe maybe I I hesitate with that that way, because generally, we hold a public hearing with a a complete proposed. Draft ordinance.
It ought to be close, I think.
Right.
Yeah, we're pretty close.
So it it, yeah, there's certainly little tweaks that you can make in that same meeting, but I think we probably need to be closer. So that they have a comprehensive understanding of what the proposal is.
Okay.
If it's halfway through, uh, and we're just working on it, then.
Let's do it separately, then, if you could come up with a definition for salons, and we could do it separately and work towards that for now.
And I I think this has been really good, that way we we kind of take care of that concern that this might take a little bit time, but.
Mm-hmm.
I I think this is a good discussion, and I think everybody's really starting to kind of understand what it is we're trying to do, and so. It may maybe a couple more meetings that we really, uh, you know, discuss this and and refine this proposal, so. Um, again, we'll we'll continue to work on it, and and as we work on it, we keep seeing and finding things that it's like, well, that that's. There's a discrepancy there, or or that's not quite working with that definition, so, um, yeah, we appreciate everybody's patience with this, but. Um, uh, yeah, I appreciate your feedback tonight.
We knew it was gonna be a big process, and we kind of, yeah, we're fumbling to get started, but I think we're kind of figuring out how to move forward and I. It'll be interesting as we move through the rest of the zones to do the same thing.
Yeah, and I I will, uh, I'll highly suggest to our three commissioners who didn't make it tonight, that that they watch this on YouTube. So they can kind of be brought up to speed of of. You know, what we've been, what we've been able to accomplish and and really discuss tonight.
Any further comments or concerns on this one before we move on?
The only other thing I can see is the commercial ancillary in the MSR. By the definition, it says it's in a mixed-use development retail, which is secondary in use to large-scale office or residential development, so it sounds like it's a. A tr- transitional thing anyway, is it's gonna be smaller in use than the house that's sitting there.
Yeah, that was when I wasn't sure, after reading the definition, it sounded like it had to be somewhat related to a bigger business of some kind. Um, but I don't know, maybe I mis- misread that.
Yeah, and then I I'd wanna look closer.
Or maybe that definition is just needing to get looked at, period.
Exactly.
Because I'm looking at it and I think one thing, then I continue reading it, I'm like, wait, that's not what I thought.
But you pointed out an inconsistency, right? We say that mixed use is, I think it's conditional right now in the MSR. And this specifically calls out mixed use development in the definition, but then it's not permitted in the table, right?
So that's one of the.
Kind of trying to clean up, so.
I found something you can look at.
Right.
I don't know what the answer is, but there you go.
Yep, so.
Okay, anything else we wanna raise on this before we move on tonight? Okay, it's been a good discussion, we'll talk about it some more next time. All right, let's then move on to agenda item number three. We need to look at the meetings from our last two minutes, so let's start with April twenty sixth. Do we need to have any discussion on those minutes? I read them, I thought they looked good.
Yeah, they were fine.
Okay, in that case, I would look for a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from the April twenty six, twenty twenty two meeting.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Wade. Um, all in favor of approving those minutes? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Those minutes are approved unanimously. Okay, let's move on to the minutes from um the meeting on May second. I will point out, I was not here, but I did watch the recording and I read the minutes and it looked good. Uh, thanks, by the way, to everyone who was here and to Commissioner Lance for running the show.
That was quite the time commitment for you to 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 watch that meeting.
Yeah, I'll uh, we have the minutes of it.
Twelve minutes.
And on what, you know, on one point two five times. Only like five minutes, so it's great. I do what I can. All right, would anyone like, well, do we need any discussion on those minutes? All right, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of May second, twenty twenty two.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Howard. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Those minutes are approved unanimously. All right, um, other business, so I need to bring up um an item which is that on June fourteenth, I will be out of town. That's the first meeting scheduled in June. Um, I mentioned that to Kylie as a possibility, and so she's at least aware of it. I don't know her availability, though.
Okay.
Um, so just letting you know ahead of time.
Okay.
Um, I know you had some issues you wanted to discuss.
So I have I have a few things I wanted to to bring to your attention, so uh first of all, let me bring this up. Um, so we had a proposed uh minor change to the Santaquin Estates subdivision. Um, a minor change uh is something that the the DRC uh has discretion to approve. Um, and it's defined as a minor change because they actually reduced uh some of the lots. So uh part of the code is is when a minor change like that happens, uh the DRC has discretion to approve it, but I need to provide written uh notice to the planning commission and city council about the change that happened, so there's my written notice to you. So they, it was originally approved as a subdivision that had one commercial lot and seventy seven single-family lots. This change will will make it one commercial lot and seventy five single-family lots. Specifically, they removed two lots from the corner of nine hundred east and one hundred and fifty south. Uh, let me bring that up for you so I can explain what it is I'm talking about and where did my plaque go? So if you remember, there was four units that were facing nine hundred east right here on this corner. Um, it just, it wasn't gonna work for them to do that, so basically, they're making it two lots and orienting those on one hundred and fifty south. It also removes the the requirement they needed to have a private sewer lateral to and and that private access, so um again, this is a minor change. It was really kind of a slam dunk to to you know, reduce it uh by two lots. Uh, we they did keep the note there that emphasizing that there's no access uh for lot seventy four from nine hundred east. We wanna make sure that that road is is going to be uh, you know, more of a collector road or or a road that's gonna uh funnel.
You don't want some backing out into traffic.
Exactly, so uh, yeah, that's that's basically, you know, uh uh fulfilling that requirement to give you written notice of of that minor change. And then the DRC did review that this morning and and did approve that minor change. Uh, the other thing we did have on the DRC agenda and and to just give you kind of a heads up of of a- again, I think a uh another ordinance amendment that I think we we need to consider looking at. Um, it's official now, there's been rumors for for a long time, but we we have a site plan application for a McDonald's. Uh, this is on the corner of uh five hundred east and and Main Street there, a designated right turn-in lane off of Main Street to go in towards Macy's. It'll be right there on that that corner, just just east of that that turn lane, so uh they were tabled, they have some red lines and some things they need to address, but one of the things that they have on their plan that uh I don't really see is unreasonable or out of the ordinary for McDonald's is they have two uh drive-through lanes with with uh four menu boards. Obviously, they have kind of the menu board you can look at, and then the menu board you pull up to and actually make your order. Our code only allows two menu boards per site. Um, I think that's probably a a an amendment we want to consider, uh if we want to have uh some of these these really large chain uh restaurants like a McDonald's or or something else, so uh, that's something that that we can, we can do a simple draft amendment for and and bring that forward to you. I like I say, I think that's kind of a slam dunk because uh that's not really a uncommon, unique thing to to see McDonald's with two separate drive-through lanes. Uh, so that's something I wanted to make you aware of and and unless I hear otherwise, we'll we'll bring that forward to you with a public hearing at the next meeting. Uh, the last thing I wanted to bring up to you was uh, and I mentioned this a little bit before the meeting uh to some of you was was we're we're trying to to finalize a date for a joint meeting with the city council to to really uh dive in and and have a discussion about the the draft uh of the the general plan. Uh, after a doodle poll, and I I still need to to connect with some people and and see if it works for them, but it was looking like the the date that's gonna work for most everybody is gonna be Tuesday, May thirty first. That's the day after Memorial Day. Um, probably from seven to nine is is what we'll really try and 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 stick to. Uh, a good two-hour discussion on that to to get your thoughts and feedback on that, but uh I will send you probably later this week uh a calendar invite just to get it on your calendar, and we'll confirm that when we get closer to it. Uh, obviously, we'll need to notice it as a public meeting and 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 all that, but I wanted to just bring that up to you so that uh you can kind of tentatively plan on that, but obviously, I'll I'll look to the mayor and and work with Chairman Wood to to finalize uh that as a a official public meeting, so those are the things, th- three things I wanted to bring to your attention and.
Very good.
Where are you gonna seat all of us?
What's that?
Where are you gonna seat all of us?
We're probably going to uh, sometimes when we have these work-type meetings, we'll do it in the the basement.
Oh, okay.
It's a a bigger room where we can, you know, uh spread out and have have enough. And and it really, we we can orient the tables to where it's more of a roundtable discussion rather than, you know, that it's it's gonna be more of a work session type meeting, so.
Sounds good. All right, commissioners, anything we need to discuss in the meeting before we adjourn? All right, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight thirty seven.
We are adjourned at eight thirty seven.